Unfortunately, we have a little tablet power outage. We need to fix it. The PAX system will still be up. We'll start without Mike if he can't hear me or any of the board members. Just raise your hand and try to speak a little louder. Full meeting can order at 5:44. Can you drive to the pledge? Pledgeley. We'll open the meeting up to a public comment for agenda items only at this time. Okay, we'll close public comment. And at this point, we'll have a special presentation from the superintendent and assistant superintendent regarding our reopening plan for September 2020. If you feel more comfortable in your distance, you can take your medical card with you here.
What are we talking about? Masked, toy masks?
Right now we are.
Okay.
We have to project.
So thank you for the time and for the vacation. Thank you everyone for coming and those that are watching, we need to watch from home. So over the last several weeks, we've been working extremely diligently and really the pace quickened once the guidelines from the state ed and from the Department of Health came in. I understand that the guidelines for COVID are quite extensive, requiring lots of time. And really, at the end of the day, the plan that we came up with is really to, in order to follow the guidelines, you really, guidelines you can only have after speech at a time in order to maintain all the distancing required. So this document is, will be evolving. We will be making adjustments to it depending on what the government says hopefully this week. But also, we continue to meet with our faculty and staff as far as finalizing some of the procedures. Well, sorry, these are just an overview of the things that have to take place every day. So daily temperature, wellness checks. Anyone entering the building, back to the staff members, they will have a daily temperature and wellness check. As I said, masks will be on at all times unless the, when someone is eating or if a faculty or staff member is in closed space alone, they can take mask breaks as the guidance suggests. Because it does get quite hot, but during a regular day, they have to have masks on. Every school district in New York City, you must maintain the six feet social distancing in all areas, in the classrooms, in the hallways. So that's not just, so in the classrooms, it's eliminating a lot of the furniture that's not necessarily necessary and narrowing it down or do just some student desks six feet apart. Depending on the room, because some rooms, even in the same building, are a little bit bigger or a little bit smaller. That's anywhere between nine and 12 desks in a room in one time. As far as the hallway traffic again, we'll still work out the final details, but there'll be, there will be certain directions to go. A lot of things will be one way and there might be some staggered leaving of rooms. So we maintain that social distancing. You know, again, for lack of a better phrase, glass, so barriers, just like you see in stores now everywhere. They'll be installed in office areas or where there's any one-on-one instruction has to take place. And my little link before, hands on hand, will be every classroom and in common areas, including additional washing stations and washing. No difficult restrooms, one at a time. So every restroom will have a monitor at it, at that restroom. And they'll be, you know, logging students into the restroom one at a time. All cleanings now have to maintain a disinfection log for all areas, which they did. And student desks will be, and the cafeteria, really anywhere where there were the students, will be cleaned in between the changing of students. The big question is, this is, the guidance is, you know, still not totally clear on this, to tell you the truth. What happens if you do have, so you can take every precaution that you possibly can, everyone knows this. So, you know, and we'll talk about it later, but you know, parents will be asked to take temperatures. We'll be taking temperatures on the bus. We'll be stressing not to come into school or work if you don't feel good. But it's going to happen. I'm sure that someone is going to come to school not feeling well, okay? So what happens when, so you have to have an isolation room. Anyone who has COVID symptoms at any time will be sent to the health office. The nurse will evaluate that person. If the nurse believes that it might be related to COVID, they'll be, a student will be placed in an isolation room, which is required, that will be monitored, go also by staff. Your guardian will be contacted. Any adult who feels is displaying symptoms of COVID will be, you know, told to go home, presuming they're tried.
Which one's the master?
Now, the guidance, I would, if you see yourself, in the guidance from the state, it talks about, you know, a suspected exposure case.
On the right side?
Just shut down that classroom or anything else, you know, can be fine.
Yes, so the master is the one on the right.
I'm not sure if the rest of the faculty, the state of the students in the public are really going to accept that. So, again, let's presume that a student wasn't feeling well, they aren't displaying a temperature. We don't know what it is, but that is certainly one of the symptoms of COVID. So that threshold will be immediately shut down and isolated. Our responding will review, really on a case-by-case basis, determine, you know, what extent was there any exposure? And we'll make a decision whether we're just shutting down that classroom for a period of time, the whole school. And again, depending on circumstances, something like this could shut a district down for any amount of time.
So the sliders on the right-hand side don't have to be up, just ones on the left-hand side?
Expect that any person will then who has symptoms will go get, will get tested. The other people in that room, the students, would remain isolated. Parents would be called, they'd be brought home and they would be expected to stay isolated, so stay home. And we'll have to provide some own instruction to them until we get a result.
Both levels of Iraq around.
The first room that was displaying symptoms. So that's very complicated. And again, that is a very likely scenario in any school in the state and or other country. But this could happen, but we do have a protocol. Again, the return to school, we determine on, you know, what we'll be working at that point. Anytime there's any suspected case, we have to report to the Department of Health. So we'll be working with the Department of Health as far as that person returning, needing a reopening of school or whatever.
Is there a standard term length for testing?
I don't think there's a standard turnaround for testing. Mr. Miller, what's, how long is it taking now about for the test results to come?
Five to seven days.
Five to seven days. Yes.
So I'm going to be assuming that for the most best, it's all working out.
Yes.
So I'm going to talk now a little bit about the schedule and teaching and learning during this time with our back to school. As many of you remember on the scene, you could go with a hybrid AED schedule to bring students in person. As Mr. Bondo mentioned, there's no way following the Department of Health and state ed guidance that we could have all students in school every day. So we have a hybrid plan, so students will be divided into two different cohorts. Cohort one will be last names beginning A through K. And the second cohort will be last names L through Z. And we did that by looking at our enrollment and just kind of getting an idea of where the good split was for that number. All families will be attending school on the same day or people who live in the same household. And with that, we will go with the last name of the oldest child in the household. So we already started to try to divide that up as far as busing and classrooms and all that goes. So we already started on that. The way the schedule will be is cohort one will be in-person at school on Mondays and Thursdays. Cohort two, so the L through Z students will be in school Tuesday through Friday. And then the opposite day, the students will be at home. So cohort two will be at home on Mondays and Thursdays. Cohort one will be at home Tuesday and Fridays. And then all students K through 12 will be at home on Wednesdays, except for our CTE students who go to Port U and Boothosys for their vocational tech program. That's the one day of the week that they are in-person for the lab part of their thing. The rest of their program will be online and that information hopefully has been shared, will be shared through Boothosys for that. We, there are, as I'm sure many of you are aware, there are several holidays throughout the school year that fall on Mondays or fall in the middle of the week. So we will be adjusting the days, the calendar, so that we don't get totally uneven for cohort one. So we'll be sending that calendar home too soon. For instance, you know, the week of Columbus Day, which is Monday off school, cohort one will actually be attending on Wednesdays. So rather than changing everyone's schedule, we'll just change that cohort one schedule. But there's also a couple other days, I think there's one other holiday on Tuesday. So we'll be sending that to right of the day to school, so we don't have to have time. So there's three different things going on in this hybrid schedule. The first are the in-school days. For the most part, other than mask wearing and social distancing, those days will look very similar to what school looks like now, right? We want to really finalize in person time. So they don't need to be serious, it's the same thing. We're trying to group the students in cohorts as much as possible. And what we mean by cohort is one group of students will stay together throughout the whole day. At the elementary school, that's fairly easy because, you know, Mrs. Dudley Lemick's third grade class is pretty much that class. So they will be in their classroom with their teacher the whole day.
Alright, so.
What will change from the normal way to the big things is that the teacher that maybe comes back from special, so are using technology. Those students will actually be coming to the classroom rather than taking the students out of the classroom to another classroom in the building. Lunchtime at the elementary school too will be done in their classroom. So again, you don't have the mixing that you would normally have to have during cafeteria time. We'll be following a similar structure for middle school. We were able to do that in a way that cohorts could stay together. Band and chorus, they'll be pulling more like lesson groups out from the same cohort. So you're not mixing students together. And that way, plus with band and chorus, there is, you need to have 12 feet social distancing rather than six feet. So that, you know, that's just difficult to do enough with a large ensemble kind of thing. So we won't be having those sorts of large classes.
I'll send you a picture.
For the high school, the cohort model is more difficult just because you have so many variables in the schedule and so many different grade levels mixed together. So they probably won't be cohorted in the same way, but we're going to try to minimize the amount that they're mixing as much as we can. Because of this process or because of the way that we're trying to keep kids together as much as possible, it might mean that their schedules will be a little different. They might not have as many choices or as many electives as we've had in the past. So that we can make this all work, and I'll talk about that in a little more than a minute. PE classes will be outdoors as much as possible. That means that students might be outdoors when it's a little bit colder than maybe we have in the past. We'll be sharing more information about that. But again, PE can be 12 feet of social distance. So, you know, it's better if we can be outside because it's going to be more difficult to maintain that and even to have a space on days that are, that's bad weather.
The ones over top of mic one?
Indoors, you just might not have the physical part of physical education.
Right.
Because we can't, again, it's difficult to have three PE classes going at the same time.
Anyway, you can get that off this select channel, nine through 16.
The feedback that we've got is what happens on those remote learning days? The days, the two days a week when they're home, when their other cohort is in school. So there can be lots of things going on in those days. At the top of it, their regular teachers, their third grade teacher, their math teacher, their social studies teacher, whatever. They will be providing work for students to do on that at-home day. That might be a lot of things. It might be all digital through, through school agency, CSOs in the younger grades. Teachers might be sending home packets of work, again, as for more primary, the expectation, rather than secondary. They might be sending home manipulatives, they might be sending home books for students to be doing during that time. But we also will be providing contact time from some of our, either it could be some of the teaching services, guidance being, special areas teachers might be doing some work at, AIS support might be happening at that time. Or we might have some content that is only going to be offered remotely. We already know that the psychology courses at the high school, if a student has psychology, they will be doing that online. This, this year, there's a chance that foreign language at the middle school may be all very remote learning time rather than during the afternoon portion of the day. So we're, we're finalizing a lot of that. But we do want to prioritize some in-person contact. We also need to take attendance on these days too, so this is one way that we're going to be able to do that. But yes, Mr. Bondo, we mentioned, we're meeting continually with our teaching staff to really work out what's going to work best for students and for our program and what we have to move forward. If it turns out that our numbers, you know, start to really go up and the governor shuts down the schools again, those classes will all go remote and we'll be putting different things aside for that. So then the other at-home day is our collaborative team after Wednesday. Again, we are going to prioritize and there's going to be contact made with the students on this day. There's a couple of different ideas out there.
L has a clue, C has a.
We're going to fly into that really tomorrow with our teaching staff. But more than likely, what will happen is that the students will be responsible to go online and do quite a bit of work during the day. Teachers are going to have some time to do collaborative work, to do small group instruction. I think this is a good opportunity, this will be a good opportunity too for maybe elementary school teachers to try to bring their whole group together at one time on Wednesday, you know, the morning meeting, the entire group online. So those kinds of experiences will be happening. The schedule for students will not be the same as it is when they're in person. So for instance, it could be that the English time at the high school, that would all get the same time. So whether you're in English nine or you're in English 11, you know that this time slot is why you'll be working with the contact with your English teacher. So ultimately, what we really want to reinforce is that remote learning will not look like it did in the spring. We all acknowledge that in the spring, we were scrambling the best we could. A lot of teachers did a tremendous amount of work, were working, you know, 36 hours a day instead of 24, trying to provide experiences, but, you know, we were grabbing what we could. We have enough time now and this will be much more thoughtful about how we're going to handle that.
So on that Wednesday staff will be in school?
Yes.
On the back of the soundboard?
That does, that Wednesday does allow, we'll be doing sanitation and cleaning every day, obviously. This maybe allows us to do a little bit more, but, you know, I feel very confident that our staff is going to be able to clean the buildings every day to make a difference for new students on that day.
It says remote control, it says E T N, it says no A, just says E T N.
The one exception really to our hybrid schedule is that our 12-on-1 students, which would be our self-contained students or our flex students at the high school, those students will be coming in Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. So they'll be getting four days of instruction, not only state ed, but we know these are the students that need the most support. And so we'll be bringing them in every day. All these programs, 15, one program at the middle and high school, as well as any coaching, collaborative, inclusion models, that will be following the norm, of course, that's what everyone wants. So the difference here is for your self-contained 12-on-1 programs.
Mrs. Dudley Lemick cuts to the bond. We've started with the mid-grade. And we, students are in school, they'll really be, you know, elementary students or middle school students will eat in their classrooms, it will be going into them, they'll be supervised, of course. At the high school, they'll use a few different areas so that we can maintain the social distancing.
Send you another picture.
They will be using, we have very bloody areas, mainly that six feet. We are finalizing with our food service department as far as, you know, how we're going to provide food when students are at home. Now, technology is a tremendous part of this. We do have orders out there, they're pending and we have new orders in place. It is our expectation, and I am highly optimistic, that by the end of September, K through 9, we will be one-to-one. So every student, K through 9, will have a device. By the end of September, the end of the pandemic, they will be able to use their own school.
It says what?
Younger grades will get iPads, older grades, control box. The high school, K through 12, initially will bring their own device and we will have some devices to give them on a national basis.
Which side of the panel is it?
It is our goal that in a few more months, we then get some devices, maybe we can go to the fourth. Different than the spring, your teachers will, they'll be, they're in your platform, with standardized tablets for that platform.
Don't bother with it.
They can populate, so it looks the same or.
Alright, now it says S T U.
We will be making videos that will be posted on our website for students, for parents, for families, to assist in navigating all this online stuff because I know for, still for many people, it is new.
And the other that we didn't put up here, but our expectation also is that the first two, week to two weeks of school, it won't be so much academic, it will be a lot more about navigating the online, you know, really setting up their online learning environment, understanding where things are, how to get there with the students, as well as, of course, creating community and connections with the students while they're in person. Because we have this expectation that there will be probably some point in time at least when we'll need to shut down for some period of time, whether it's a week or more than that, because of outbreaks.
We were hitting the mic, just seeing him.
So we really want to move this that front in time, just by getting to know the students, so they can understand where things are and what they, how they can use a lot of these programs, having to help them.
We are fortunate, of course, that we own our own transportation, not the mercy of a transportation company, that's a big plus. So buses will run, really, on those days when students are coming to school, it's really a regular bus stop. And it doesn't be a first-hand, students, one student per seat.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. One student per seat, students from the same household can sit in the same seat. There we go. Between the runs, just like between when classes switch, the buses will be wiped down on the high touch areas and in a full sanitizing of the buses after the AM and PM runs are done. Again, according to the guidance, there will be some exceptions for medical, but masks have to be worn at all times unless a student has a medical exception. So that's on the school bus, on the bus. Again, the guidance talks about, they're really calling out, and we will also, for the parents and guardians, to assist in taking the temperatures at home and to obviously not send your child in if they have 100 or higher temperature. Irregardless, we will have an additional staff member on every bus when the students get on. We really can't hold the bus up to take the temperature while the kids are waiting. Some buses are on the highways, we can't stop traffic for that long. So we felt the best and safest way for everyone, the students will come onto the bus. Once the bus gets going, that staff member will then take the temperature because you have to take everyone's temperature and make sure it's below 100 before they enter the building. Any student who, hopefully not, does show a temperature and they'll be sectioned off, a couple of seats that they'll be asked to sit at. And then when they arrive at school, students will be dismissed and then they'll be escorted to the nurse so that they can evaluate and that process of the isolation room. And again, then we would have to, you can see how this could spiral because if someone on a bus ends up being positive, you know, they have potentially exposed everyone who was on the bus. So, I mean, I could really go down a long journey explaining the difficulties of that, but that's something that we're going to have to deal with. The entrance to buildings will be staggered. There'll be students be going through multiple entrances at each building so that there's no buildup of students, so that we maintain that six feet. So that does mean depending on when the buses come in, some students might have to step to wait on the bus a few minutes when the students who got there before them to make sure they're in the building.
Another part of that is that when students come into school, normally in the past, not so much at the elementary school, but at the high school and middle school, they've been kept on one area before they go to their classrooms, that won't be happening either. So when students are coming into the building, they'll be going up, be grabbing their breakfast, but they'll be going directly to a classroom. And we will be having extra supervision for those times in the buildings so that we don't, you know, really not giving students the opportunity to congregate in an area anywhere in the building.
So if you can imagine, this is again a high school student, their bus has dropped the moth, there's probably only, you know, 15 students or 20 students on the bus. They stay six feet apart, they go into their designated entrance. There'll be a grab-and-go breakfast for them and then they'll go right to their first period class. There'll be someone that's supervising them and they'll wait there until the day begins. But the hours, really the start times at the schools, it's going to be, you know, in the first few days, it's going to be a little flexible. I do anticipate though, really, once we go a couple of weeks, that the times will be, should get pretty close to a normal beginning of period one so that all the periods really will look quite similar as they do on a regular day.
So that's everything on our hybrid schedule. There is one other option open to parents, and that is a remote-only option. So remote-only options would mean that students are not coming to the school building at any point in time. You know, of course, we believe that the social emotional health of students is important for the in-person and in-class experience. But if the parents do not feel comfortable doing that, they may choose to go remote. We'll give you some more details on how to do that in a few minutes. But the remote experience will be very different than the hybrid experience as far as our remote students will have a different teacher of record. So it won't be the teacher teaching social studies third period, will not be the teacher who's also teaching the remote students necessarily. So it's not like the remote students are just going to be walking in and watching the teacher teach in the classroom. It will be a whole different remote learning experience. Of course, we're prioritizing that person-to-person contact. So as part of remote learning, students will be meeting with their teachers every day for extensive periods of time. Now, I'm not going to guarantee that they will be looking at a screen, looking at a teacher from. teacher from 8:00 AM until 3:00 PM. There will be synchronous, meaning at the same time as the teacher, and asynchronous being times when they're working on their own. But the majority of time will be spent working one-on-one with the teacher each day. With that, we may have some teachers who are responsible for more than one grade level or more than one subject within a content area. So an elementary school teacher may have, you know, six third graders and whatever it might be, seven fourth graders, making up numbers completely, just depending on how all, you know, who chooses the remote-only option, where the numbers fall out in a particular grade level or content area. And the same thing at the high school and middle school level. A social studies teacher might be teaching US History VII as well as Roll Ten, depending on the content area. So you won't necessarily be all there with all the same kids, but it will still be an experience designed specifically for your middle school. The emphasis, like I mentioned before, the emphasis will be on the mandated courses that children need to graduate or to move on to the next grade or to the next level. That may, again, limit some of the elective choices. That may limit some of the elective choices for students at the, specifically the high school, more so than the middle school. I don't know if we'll be able to offer the full complement of AP or college courses that we've done in the past. It could mean that a ninth grader only has one or two choices, not, you know, the four different art classes that we normally have, or whatever it might be. You know, in order to try to be this for all people, we, you know, we might need to streamline some of the opportunities that we have. And as I mentioned, again, daily video conferences, time of teachers, synchronous and asynchronous. Oh, very important part. If a parent decides to commit to remote-only learning, we ask that they're committing for a full 10 weeks, so it'd be the first marking period because it'll be very difficult, especially because the remote-only option is not exactly what they're doing in the hybrid. It's not something that's going to be necessarily as easy for students to hop in and out of that experience. So they have the same curriculum, the same content, but it won't necessarily be taught in the same way. So parents will need to commit for at least this first 10 weeks. Each quarter will assess where we are, what guidance we've been given by the state, and then students will, or teachers will, sorry, parents will have the opportunity to choose if they want to continue or if they'd like to transition back into the hybrid schedule. We understand that, you know, it's, everything is so unknown at this point that it's not difficult, but for us to make plans, we need to make sure that we know we have students for a certain period of time.
And certainly, we're going to have, we'll be giving the opportunity, we'll talk in just a moment, for parents and guardians to choose that I would like my child to be all remote. Again, the guidance is unclear whether, you know, you need a medical documentation. Our stance is going to be that if a parent or guardian does want to keep their child home for remote learning, that they can do it. We're not going to require a note. There will also be staff, though, who, for various reasons, don't feel comfortable coming in. That's a little different. They'll need a note, but the idea what Mrs. Doudilemic was saying, we'll see what students have decided and what grades are going to stay home remotely, we'll match them up with the teachers who've decided to, or for medical reasons have to stay home, we'll match that up as best as possible, and then we might need to assign other people to do the remote learning, depending on the numbers.
And with remote learning, students will receive their special classes, so that might be one way, one area where that is a teacher who is teaching the, in the hybrid model, but they'll be prepared something for the, for the remote students. Remote students might not get as much one-on-one time with that group of teachers, that might be more, you know, the teacher giving it to the remote learning teacher and the remote learning teacher, you know, facilitating that in some fashion. So we mentioned, parents have a choice, so how do we do that? We will be sending out, we will be sending out a hard copy letter to every family in the district, but we'll also be putting this out on social media and through our school messenger service, probably tomorrow. And families who would like to choose the remote-only option need to email the address that we put up here, wcstlearn@highland-k12.org, to let us know if you do not want your child to do the hybrid system. So basically, you're kind of opting out of the in-person option. Not everyone, if you don't send us an email, we're going to assume that you want the hybrid option. So we don't need to hear from every person, we only need to hear from those people who want the remote-only option. You can also choose, if you want, for your high school student to do the hybrid version and your third grader to do remote only. You know, really, that can be on a student-by-student basis. I know even with my own children, last spring, they both, they had two very different responses to that whole experience. So we understand that some students respond to both of these in a different way. If you choose remote only, if something miraculously changes and we can bring everyone back to school, the remote-only part will land, just so people are aware that I don't think that this is going to happen, but. Then the second thing we're going to ask in this, in this letter is if you are choosing the hybrid option, but you do not want district transportation, to send us a note saying you're not planning to bring, or that you are planning to bring your students to school, whatever method you're going to use for that. Again, in trying to minimize the number of students that are on each bus and to make our routes efficient, you know, the more we can know about who's going to be riding our buses, the better. And again, because we need to be making plans, if that for some reason changes and you said you weren't going to use district transportation, but now you need it, you need to give us a couple of weeks' notice because that could really change our bus route. Something we did put up here, but it is in our plan, it's on the website. In the past, there's been quite a lot of flexibility at the elementary school about where we're taking students at the end of the day. People could call and say, oh, my normal stop is at our house, but today I need my child to go to the grandmother's house or to the neighbor's or wherever. We're not going to be able to do that. This year, part of it is the cowork kind of thing, part of it is just trying to, again, keep the routes very efficient in the time that we have. So again, any changes that you make from the beginning of the school year, we need a two-year, two-year, two month, two weeks, sorry, two-week lead time on that. So we won't be able to make those changes on a daily basis. If you need your child to go someplace else, you may need to have them picked up instead of taking somewhere else on the bus.
So again, so we're meeting with our creative teachers and staff tomorrow, and we will continue to meet with them to finalize just some of the fine details, but this is the crux of our plan.
Sarah, are we going to allow parents to be able to do a combination of remote and in-person learning?
Yeah, we can choose either the hybrid or the supplement.
One or the other.
One or the other, but if you have two different children, one can be one, one can be the other, but the same student can't do both.
Can't do both.
You know, if, are there any circumstances that might sneak you to change that? Absolutely, on a feedback basis, it's a down conversation. But for a general day, can we even be established if one person or another?
Sure.
Whether one is shut, how do you plan to execute those, through the app or?
So we, yes, an app. Most of Ulster County is using the same app, it's through BOCs, it's all, they'll be logging it in, so it'll keep track, it's all on an app.
That will be for staff. Students will be telling every student that they're on the bus.
Oh, for staff, students.
We're asking parents, in fact, before they pick us up, obviously, not right, I mean, they have temperature, but, um, we'll be checking that too. And then the guidance app lets you, to really well check on.
Period.
Period, I don't know if that's a language, but.
Right.
So we'll be doing that, however, but.
Any other questions, Sue?
Um, Sarah, I do appreciate that you want to, you want to keep the kids safe in regard to the kids getting on the bus and taking the temperature after the kids get on the bus. I'm concerned that if a child does have a fever and the child is determined to be COVID-positive, for the other children who are on the bus, I think the parents who are doing the right thing, trying to keep their kids safe, are very concerning, have a very negative effect on the districts.
I share your concern, absolutely. We went over this kind of over and over as far as the, for safety reasons. It is our hope, though, I'm sure kids are going to slip through, it is our hope that the parents are going to do the temperature check, not send them in, even if they haven't checked the temperature, but the student's feeling, you know, sick. I might lose my mic there, right? The mic's still working. The issue, though, was that a lot of students aren't necessarily, they don't have a parent at the bus stop. So if they, if the bus just can wait, it waits, and the five kids are kind of online waiting to get checked in, if someone does display 100 or more, there might not be a parent there, we can't just leave them at the bus stop.
I, I understand.
And then some of the buses are on 299, so now we're stopping, it's dangerous, but the people unfortunately do not always follow and stop a stop bus.
Yeah, but it's, I'm just concerned.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm concerned.
Thank you, I share your concern.
And I would say too, again, we still have a month before we're going to have students, a little bit more than a month before we'll have students in the classroom. So we figure out a better way that we can guarantee that, you know, we'll certainly put that in place, but just as of this moment, like I said, we've gone over and over and over it, and that's where we have to go. And really, part of the guidance also tells us, we have to do a lot of education in the first couple of weeks about recognizing the signs of COVID and sharing that information with parents and all of that. So hopefully, it won't be such a huge thing. And we'll try to isolate students to a degree when they're getting on the bus, but that's, again, it's going to be difficult.
Two questions. I thought I kind of heard it mentioned, but something we had talked a little bit about last week, and the start time for the elementary school and the end time for the high school, just to make sure we're reiterating that. And then also, we know that there is a lot of concern, especially on social media regarding the AA day-off, BB, where it's been changed to the AB day-off, AB. Just to talk a little bit about our confidence in terms of making sure the schools are as clean as they need to be before switching to homework.
All right, so we, we had long conversations among ourselves, and I believe also with the Board of Education. Different schools are doing it different ways. It was, at the end of the day, after really speaking with our faculty and staff, the feeling was that if it's AA, and then Wednesday is the collaboration day, the check-in connect day, the B students haven't had any direct contact with their teacher, or they haven't had the same, they haven't been taught that lesson yet. So it makes the Wednesday where the teacher then can, if it's AB, everyone has been taught the same thing, and on Wednesday, the teacher can follow up, build upon that lesson. So as far as continuity of the lessons, we thought it was better to go to AB. Also, the AA, again, it's different philosophies. That does put five days for a student where they're not going to really be with, physically with their teacher because a B student would go Thursday, Friday, and they're not going to see their teacher again until the next Thursday. It's a long time. Now, our, just our staff, we will be flexing the staff for the cleaning crew and the custodians. So the cleaning will be going on constantly, but once a day is over, so let's say, once Monday is over, the building is going to get a full cleaning, a deep cleaning. I know that it's a kind of a, a new term, deep clean, but it's going to get the deep clean every day. It's not really just Wednesday, it's going to be every day.
As far as the start times, we did take away the delayed opening and the early release, so it's, it'll be very close to normal time, of course, depending on what the bus route needs are and all of that, but basically, it's the same start and end times that we have.
Yes, please, thank you.
Will it be a virtual open house or meet a teacher, especially probably earlier than we typically get, so that all of the families have to wait this time?
Yes, that we are, that is something that is kind of the next step to plan. It will, we will have those open houses. Obviously, it's going to be virtual, but we have, we'll be talking about that really tomorrow, so I don't have any dates at this time.
Sarah and Tom, no extracurricular activities after school, besides our own district, no outside community groups can be utilized?
Correct, so no outside community groups will be able to utilize our facilities. It is our hope, and I know we'll be talking about it, we need the clubs, I truly believe we need the clubs to start virtually because students are going to need an outlet to get together with their, with their, with their friends, to kind of do service work, do projects. I already have the Rotary Club asking me for the contact information for Interact. I said, well, no one's been appointed yet, there is no Interact yet, you know, because they need virtual help with some of their projects, and they work very closely with the Interact Club. So the clubs, and I know we'll talk about it, we do have a form that advisors will have to hand in on a monthly basis, showing when they met, what topics they were talking about, so that we can keep track of that. Some clubs will more easily be able to meet than others, because some are, and just because of the nature of the club, it's difficult. Other clubs, their work doesn't start until later in the year, so some of the clubs, like a mock trial, and we don't know if there's going to be a mock trial, so that's not a club that's going to start meeting on a regular basis, but something like Interact or even an art club, and, you know, they can start meeting virtually, they can do things. I think for the, for the mental health and wellness of our students, they're going to need an outlet like a club to go to.
And even, we didn't put it in the presentation, but it is in the safety or the reopening plan that's on the website. As far as sports go, right now, the, I don't know, the section of the state has pushed off the date, the start of sports to September 21st. I don't know that anyone really thinks that that's necessarily going to be the start date of sports, but the, I guess it's the state, right? Has decided.
Yes, it is the state.
Shortened seasons starting hopefully in the winter so that we could be able to get all winter, fall and spring seasons in, in this school year. So we'll see how that plays out.
Right, it's just a kind of an idea that they're floating out there, that if there wasn't a fall season, you'd have a winter season, and then like start a little earlier in the spring, do your fall sports in a shortened season in the early spring, and then do your a little later spring, do your regular spring sports. Anything else, any of the board members?
One of the extracurriculars is intermurals. How are we planning on doing that in the social division?
Yeah, so there wouldn't be able to be intermurals. If, if we're still closed, something like that, I'm sure would not happen. So any of the clubs that don't happen, the person's not going to get the stipend.
Okay, thank you, Tom and Sarah.
Great, yeah, and we'll keep the board and the public informed as we continue to kind of tweak the plan and as we certainly will know a lot more. Hopefully, it's this week that the governor's supposed to make a decision on whether we're going back to school in hybrid or if we're all remote.
Okay, moving on to acceptance of reports. Be resolved, Board of Education under recommendation to superintendent, approve and acknowledge reviewing the following reports. Board of Education meeting minutes 519-2020, 62-2020, 616-2020. Tenants report, period 10, tenants in remote enrollment, not to report at this current time, our internal claims audit and our audit report, July 17. and our audit report, July 4, July. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, seconded by Mike. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Under curriculum and instruction. Approval of committee on special education minutes. Be resolved, the Board of Education hereby accepts the recommendation of the Committee on Special Education according to the minutes of the CSE meetings of March 30th, along with the month of April 15, 16, 17, 20, 24, 27, 28, and along with the month of May 11, 13, 20th, 21st, and 26th, along with the additional month of June 1st, 2nd, 10th, 12th, 15th, 17th, 18th, 19th, 22nd, 24th, and 26th. CSE, the amendment agreement, no meetings, not to report at this current time. CSE meeting, no meeting, transfer in, not to report at this current time. This committee authorized the arrangements for such student special education programs and services. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion. Motion by Camille, second. By Tom. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Approval of committee on preschool special education. Be resolved, the Board of Education hereby accepts the recommendation of the Committee on Preschool Special Education according to the minutes of the CPSE meetings of the month of May 26, 27, 28, 29, along with the month of June 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, 8th, 10th, 11th, 12th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 18th, and 30th. CPSE, no meeting, transferred in, not to report at this current time. Amendment, agreement, no meeting, not to report at this current time. This committee authorized the arrangements for such student special education programs and services. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, seconded by Mike. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Under personnel, would you like to do personnel as a block from A through F?
I didn't see it in that.
S, no?
We had a question.
Okay, you want to do a standalone or just do each one?
You can be specific.
Okay, we'll do it, we'll do it as a block. And if you have specific questions for certain areas, we can move forward. So we're going to take personnel as a block from A through F. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, seconded by Sue. Just, I know Camille had brought this up, but just a point of interest. Under extracurricular, the last sentence, this resolution will be in effect only if the advisor meets and carries out their responsibilities virtually with club members until otherwise stated. We have a motion by Heather, seconded by Sue. Is there any question? Anybody want to bring up a particular idea?
Yeah, at the high school, we have four classes, advisor and assistant titles. They're all over the map there. And some places have two assistants, some have an advisor and an assistant.
Something specific with sophomore class. So the two underclassmen, Breckman and Floxmore, they have an advisor and assistant. And then the senior and senior have a kind of advisor and assistant.
It's not the way it's here. It's not that on the list. Right. So the salaries change too.
Lisa Otis is the advisor.
Yeah, she's an advisor, not an assistant.
Correct. So then should the assistant be?
And the assistant, what should be that number there for the pay?
Probably not just the assistant or freshman, but I'm not sure.
Okay. So when you get to junior class, it's two different salaries for the assistants. And then it goes back down to the same as the other teaching, HDA, with other assistants. For senior class, it's just one same role in math, so what's, what should it be?
Right. So off the top of our head, I don't know what the numbers are.
I have that contract here. Do you have it?
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, I do, but some of them are, I don't have it in front of me, but some of the advisors were splitting, being the head. While some were being the head advisor, and then it was the co-advisors. So for example, and this one by my memory, there were positions in which were three people, but two people were taking it.
I think what Tom's asking, is there a, is there a standard? Is there a number for class advisors, say $3,000, and then the?
I think the senior advisor, the junior, the junior advisors and the advisors have a, I think it's a $4,000.
Yeah, that's, that's $7.50.
I think the other piece is, it's not unusual if you have one stipend in position, and the faculty say, you know what, you and I are going to do this, and we're going to split.
Well, then you have to title that as a call.
Right. So long as, you know, it's split, that's the only, other than that, that's a standard approach.
Yeah, I think it's just listed the junior class assistants for $6.
That's the biggest.
Yeah, that's the, that's the biggest.
All right. I'm looking at the contract, looking at it right now. So junior class advisor, yeah, no, assistant contract, $9.56. And junior class assistants for each one is $7.50.
But then when you get the senior class assistants at $7.44, that's what's?
So senior class advisor, yes, I can't, it's listed as $9.56, and junior class assistants is $7.44. So it is listed that way, and I can obviously look into that as.
Yeah.
But that is how it's listed on the HDA contract. Good question. Yeah, good question, but that is how it's stated.
Thank you.
And if you're employed, we will double check all, and then we can make it just adjust in the stipend at the next meeting if any of them are in.
So the sophomore class, they're just splitting the advisor for $1, no?
I mean, so the sophomore class, we'll get it right up now. So the sophomore class, so I have a question. Sophomore class advisor is $9.56 and $7.44 for the sophomore class assistants.
So that should be added and then divided by two, because there's no?
Sophomore class assistant though only has an advisor as $9.56, who he said is, and then one assistant, which is $7.44, which is, we don't know. Sophomore class assistant only has one. Lisa Otis, can you see sophomore class advisor? Right, that is, correct. I see that.
So the assistant for sophomore present is $7.44.
Sophomore class is $7.44, yes.
And then junior? Junior class has an advisor, and then they have two assistants at $7.50.
The junior class advisor is $9.56, and it's two junior class assistants at $7.50.
How is that?
How is that? I don't know, but somebody says you.
Who's on HDA negotiations?
They slipped in the next group talk.
Yeah, no, I understand. If it's in a contract, we can.
So I just want to clarify that the sophomore class assistant is at $7.44, so that is just never on the mind. There anything else? That is correct.
So Lisa, just so I'm clear, freshman class only has an advisor and assistant, and sophomore class only has an advisor and assistant?
That is correct. I'm going to look in there.
And junior and seniors have an advisor and two assistants, okay?
Yes. And then, there's more going on for junior and senior?
Yeah. Anything else? Anybody have any other questions?
I don't have, I think it should read June 30th, 2021.
Okay, let's see.
Where are you, Sue?
I have F, I have a year of time.
Five. Yes, 2021, correct.
Where is she?
F, athletic director.
June, okay, yes. See that? Thank you.
Not to throw more at you guys, but at some point, I would like to see the mechanism by which these clubs are, the attendance, the attendance of the meeting. The quantity, you know, I'd like to see how much is going on between those clubs.
Sure.
So if we can see that whatever benefits you.
We'll be asking the advisors to hand these in on a monthly basis, and we'll review them, make sure, and what clubs are active.
That was added at the last minute on your agenda on Monday. So you can also have a copy in your agenda.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we have a motion out by Heather and Ed. I believe, or Heather and Sue, I believe, was the last here. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Okay, under business in operation, our bomb resolution. Bomb resolution as presented to the Board at this meeting dated August 4th, 2020. The Board of Education, the Highland Central School District, authorizing not to exceed $453,742 in aggregate principal amount of serial general obligation bombs for financial purchase of school buses at an estimated maximum cost of $453,742. Levy of tax and annual installments and payment thereof, the expenditure of such sum for such purpose and determining other matters in connection there with. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, seconded by Heather. Discussion. I'll ask the Board of Education first.
Yes, it's a roll call. Okay, just going to state your name, just say yes or no. Loudly, please. Ed Mizal?
Yes.
Heather Welch?
Yep.
Camille Adoma?
Yes.
Mike Lucaxius?
No.
Sue Gilmore?
No.
Tom Miller?
Yes.
Alan Verone?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be five yes, two no. That is, motion has carried. Thank you.
Okay, budget transfer be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent approves the budget transfer for the school year 2020, 2021 as follows. Budget transfer $6.27 for $10,397. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, seconded by Tom. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Transportation contract be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent approves attached transportation contract for the purpose of transporting Sue to the period of July 13th, 2020 through August 21st, 2020. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, seconded by Mike. Discussion.
Second class day? That's only for just a month, is that right? I agree with you in the year program. Actually, you have the project, yeah, you. Oh, so it's just the sophomore, oh, okay, okay.
Yes, it's July 13th to August 21st. That's the contract. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Donation acceptance outright be resolved, the Board of Education, upon a recommendation of the superintendent accepts a generous donation from Outride to the 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization for the estimated amount of $33,192 worth of equipment and online training for the purpose of writing for Focus Cycling Program at the Highland Middle School. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, seconded by Sue. Discussion.
I'd like to thank certainly the middle schools, the middle men, the others, certainly, the H focus, the Hite program. So we had a number of bikes donated, plus the training. So it's our hope that.
36 new brand bikes that are going to be in the program. Great, great job.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we want to kind of thank you out there.
Yes.
Surplus inventory tech equipment be resolved, the Board of Education, upon a recommendation of the superintendent approves the technology equipment that has been stated in the attached memo to dispose of in importance of district policy and New York State municipal and school law. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, seconded by Camille. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Another donation, Community Foundation of the Hudson Valley, yes. Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon a recommendation of the superintendent accepts a generous donation from the Community Foundation of the Hudson Valley, 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization in the amount of $1,183 for the purpose of the Extreme Health Project. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, seconded by Sue. Discussion.
Do you have any information about this? I don't know a lot about it typically, but there is a, one of our people at the middle school who's been doing science and studying hardworking. And it's all.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So carry. Sarah?
I did have a lot, I add, and I didn't quite get the presentation that was coming through today. I was believing Mr. Monroe didn't speak to the other work that he was doing. But I do want to just thank everyone, what I was called, in graduation ceremony. You and I, all three, ceremony, we went very similar, um, also having chairs.
I relate to Sarah that I had a phone call from as far as Pleasant down saying what a wonderful job the district did for its graduations. Because that really made me feel good.
Sue, I had one from Cynthia of Chile. How, that was a class act all the way, they thoroughly enjoyed what I had been. And another one from down in the Pentagon. They both felt that I had put forth an incredibly respectable presentation that was able to celebrate each child and their long career.
But to just continue, I see at least a few graduates here. I hope that, you know, what we did met their expectations. We did delay it, of course, that was the wish of the class and the families to delay it and to do some version of intercourse. And certainly, the hope for everyone was that we could have had larger numbers together. But it really was a great team effort, as it always is. You know, thanks to the board members, Mr. Verone, Mr. Miller was a trooper, was there for all three of them. Thank you very much, and Miss Gilmore. It was really a great night. You know, if you haven't taken the time on the website, you know, the drone footage, they put it all together with the still pictures. It really is fantastic. So thank you and congratulations, Canada, Class of 2020. I would like to talk a little bit about some of the work we're doing on trying to achieve racial equity. It's a long road, certainly. The issue of racial inequity is sadly a worldwide problem. At the July 7th Board of Education meeting, students, alumni, parents, shared their experiences of racial inequity right here in the Highland Central School District. The only way to move forward towards racial equity in the world is to take our small part of that world, the Highland Central School District, and create the planned approach towards racial equity right here at home. The journey toward racial equity in our schools will be one that has no finish line. And to make effective change, it will be a marathon, not a sprint. In the midst of creating a reopening plan for September, the district administration has also been working collaboratively with a group of concerned faculty members and has been reaching out to our surrounding districts, professional contacts for references, guidance, and ideas. One important aspect that we recognize is the need for professional outside assistance in helping our school district to move in a positive and effective direction. We are currently meeting with individuals and organizations who have the expertise and experience in planning for racial equity to create an effective plan or strategy for the future. The key issues that we will need to address include, but are not limited to, school climate, addressing the code of conduct, educational equity, teacher diversity, and curriculum and culturally responsive instruction. In the coming months, our planning will include establishing district goals on racial equity, establishing district and school level equity teams, and the development of a district equity plan. Regardless of what reopening of schools will look like, the administration is committed to the creation of a framework for addressing and promoting racial equity here in the Highland Central School District. That is all I have for right now, Mr. President.
Are there any questions for the superintendent? Okay, I'll move on to new business under Board of Education. We have an amended district calendar for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Be resolved, the Board of Education upon the recommendation of superintendent approves revised district calendar for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camino, second by Mike. Discussion?
Yeah, so in our reviewing of the school year, again, we don't know how long the hybrid model will be, or whether, whether there'll be school closing. We do know that there is a lot of training of faculty and staff, and then again of students, that has to take place. So we took all four, normally we have just two superintendent conference days at the beginning of the year. So those conference days will all move to the beginning of the year. So that faculty and staff will report September first, and they'll be in, just faculty and staff, first, second, third, and fourth, the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, leading into Labor Day weekend. The two dates in the current calendar that people may have seen would then become, would be holidays for everyone. So Election Day was one of the other scheduled superintendent conference dates. There were no students on that day already. Now there'll, it'll be a holiday for everyone, there'll be no one at the school. The second superintendent conference day that we moved was the one that was originally scheduled on May fourteenth. Okay, May fourteenth. So now, May fourteenth actually will be a day of school for everyone, and the holiday is moved to December twenty-third. So that faculty and staff, students will come in twenty-one, twenty-two, and then they'll be off the twenty-third. Because we had to adjust to make sure the contact days for students and teachers was all the same. So again, we'll make full utilization of those four days, it'll be a lot of training on the health and safety aspect, and a lot of training on the virtual and online teaching aspect. So that was the reason for the change in the calendar.
Any discussion regarding the amended calendar? Okay, we have a motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Under old business, capital project update, I could give you a quick snapshot. Yes. Okay, the, um, give you time along speaking to, to breeze through that, uh, update that we got from CSR this afternoon. The Support Service Committee has gotten fully involved in the project since, uh, the last week in May, only because, uh, there seemed to be some lack of communication and some stagnant areas of work which became a concern to the committee. So we started meeting, uh, the second, third week in May, and we've met just about every two weeks since then. Some surprising developments came out of those meetings, which the Support Service Committee previous wasn't aware, and then we became aware, and that's how we progressed along. Three major items. Number one would be the media center roof. We had some difficulty in the original design, and it took from contract signing until June fifth, I believe it was, to a Friday that we finally got submitted, which is a process that contractor would have to take in order to get approval to move forward to order the material on our stylight for the media center. So that was finally submitted, I believe around June fifth, and approved shortly thereafter. We were told at that time that the delivery of the material would not take place until about the first, the second week in August. Since then, we've been updated, and I believe right now, our material is not being delivered until the third week in August, which would push our general contractor to complete the media center, taking the, the rest, the remaining month of August, the entire month of September, possibly a week or so into October for completion. Uh, I believe at this point in time, starting August thirty-first, moving forward, any work that would be done in the media center would have to be done on second shift because we have superintendent conference days, so the first week of September, and then school starts on September eighth. Although during those meetings, we also were advised that we had an issue with asbestos, additional asbestos at the elementary school, which we did have that special meeting back at the end of, uh, June, and we had to authorize a change order not to exceed eighty thousand dollars for that work to commence on June twenty-ninth. If not, we were told that the project would be delayed if we didn't move forward accepting that change order. With discussion with the board at that virtual meeting, I believe we agreed to a not to exceed price of eighty thousand dollars. Since then, and subsequent meetings, we've been asking for a final update on that, and as of today, and if you read this letter from Tom Rithemthaler, we do not have a firm number. It looks like it could be around seventy-six thousand, eight fifty-four. Support Service Committee had some dialogue this afternoon, and we're very concerned that that amount is that high, because we were told at subsequent meetings that they were doing it as timing material, and we were going to save a lot more money, and it was going to come in well under the eighty thousand dollars. Right now, reading this letter, it seems to be that the final change order to be no greater than seventy-six thousand, eight fifty-four, so that's very disconcerting to the Support Service Committee. Have to be somewhat, um, surprised with that, as you were told all along that it was going to be a lot less, so that's, that's one issue. Um, back on May sixteenth meeting, I believe it was, we were made aware that no movement had taken place on a design flaw in the front entrance of the high school where we have an existing well, which was in the lawn area, and now has become part of our bus loop, so it's in the pavement area. That was brought to the attention of our design team, uh, at a kickoff meeting back in December, early January, I think it was December, it was also followed up by Director of Facilities, Mr. Miller, that that was a active well, not a well to be abandoned. And it took our design team until the May sixteenth meeting that we became aware that there was no movement from Department of Health, uh, and Mr. Bon Jovi, uh, the following day made contact with our county executive and tried to get some movement, or I guess it was also the Department of Health up there, get some movement. They had not really gotten any design at that point in time, that's May sixteenth from December eighteenth, and was initially brought to their attention. Since then, we've had multiple meetings with, uh, our design team, the also county department and health onsite, we've had two, we just had one last week. We brought in our, one of our county legislatures to try to expedite. Finally, last week, we had a meeting with the deputy county executive, two members of Department of Health, our design team, Mr. Miller, Mr. Bon Jovi, myself, Ed Mizal, and several other. Our county legislature was there too, and we kind of explained what was going on, and I believe, uh, what the district, with Mr. Bon Jovi, Mr. Miller, explaining to county that, uh, it's an active well, it's been there for sixty-five years. It's not one of the traditional above-ground well casings that you see when you drive around. It's always been below grade. With that, and a design is going to have a camera in it, detection system, a structured subdrain which is daylight, and a sealed structure. Uh, they finally gave us somewhat of a blessing on Friday, I believe. So we have since been asking, or prior to that, we've been asking for, what is that cost going to be? And today, we still do not have a firm number on it. And that's another discouraging fact for the, the Support Service Committee, because we've been promised several meetings ago that the number was going to be tomorrow, 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 and still haven't reached this yet. So there's, those two items that we have our, we had our back put against the wall, almost let it out of making the decision. The asbestos, we were told, we cannot make a decision at that meeting, that, uh, virtual meeting, that we would delay the project. So it would be us delaying the project, not our design team or our management team. Again, with this well, being aware of it back in December and early January, it's taken until August first, just about, till we got an answer, and a, and a, and a design not too far off of that date to move this thing forward. And we're supposed to off the school up in three weeks. As you can see upfront, we still don't have paving, we still don't have finished paragraph work, we don't have finish of, of side blocks, and we still got to do that structure and contain that, that well. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, and I'm not going to speak for the Support Service Committee, and I'm sure that they're not happy, I know both of them expressed concern of how it's been handled by our management team, and of course, how it's been handled by our design team. And even with that media center. Well, you can tell I'm a little frustrated here. We were told by our design professionals that if we went to expedited review last year, and we could plus the district an extra thirty-five, twenty thousand, I'm sure the record that number was, and have expedited review so we can get the project out to bid in early December and allow all our contractors to submit all their, their long lead items and have them ready to go June twenty-sixth, and none of that's happened. We're going to go until October, probably into December, I mean, November, until this media center roof is complete. We're going to really be pushing to get our front loop ready for opening day. So I, I don't know how you, you want us to move forward, but at this point in time, we're not happy with how our design and management team has handled the project to date.
Right, Alex, if I may, I just have a few comments, and I appreciate the time that you and the Support Services Committee certainly put into all of this. But sometimes it helps to have a little bit of a further, a perspective that's a little further away from the action, because you guys are dealing with all the nuts and bolts. Uh, regarding the abatement, you know, this is a multi-million dollar project, so, you know, as much as we would love them to always go smoothly, and everybody to follow up on every detail, uh, truth be told, and having gone through many, many other projects before, that doesn't always happen. So here, we've had some items missed, and we could point all the fingers, but in the end, it's Highland School District that has to solve the problem. Um, you know, the abatement work, though you can go back and forth, it's still within the amount that the board set, it hasn't exceeded that amount, it's coming close. And, uh, you know, you're always in a crunch around August because you got to open up schools, or certainly the facility has to be ready for, for use by the community. So, you know, I, I don't think that this two or three thousand, uh, that Rizetola here is talking about is going to make a, a difference. We've got to get this work done, we got to get these groups out of the way so things can continue. I mean, those are my thoughts on the abatement, and really the well vault, you know, the well vault. We know the, the front of the building, we, was a complex manner, and we kind of knew that. It got further complex as we dug in the ground, and we were expecting that. I think we were all talking about, well, we got to have the front of the school ready for September, and that's always the goal. But if we don't make a decision there, we stand to fall short of that goal, and we still might, because of lean items and things like that. So, um, you know, that, that, the well vault is coming in around twenty to twenty-five thousand, from what I read here. What I don't want to see happen, uh, under well vault, that first paragraph, you know, we anticipate this number will be slightly reduced when finalized. I don't want to be haggling over two thousand dollars for a twenty-five thousand dollar thing, and that hold up the front of the building. So if we have a plan that's approved, the plan that was approved on Friday, and it sounded tentative, I don't know if we got that in writing, but does that fall within the twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar range?
I think, Mike, the, uh, with all due respect, I think part of the frustration here is that these numbers, we still have solid numbers, these are estimates, and even those estimates, we were given, we say it's two to three thousand dollars, but no, it's, it's, in reality, it's more of an eighteen thousand dollar bump from what we were being, uh, we were being guided towards.
Right, I don't want to get into detail. What's the answer to the question? Is the word that was approved Friday, does it fall within twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars?
We don't know, this is the problem, is that we're not being, we're not being given these numbers, we're not being told directly what the cost will be. Even in this, there's an ambiguity, it doesn't describe the camera monitoring and the alert system. The, the number we're being given here is strictly for the vault and the conduit placement. We're not being given, we're simply not being given the details that we need to make these decisions by the management team and by the, uh, the architectural board. And as Ellen points out, we, we put out quite a bit of money to get a jump on this so that we weren't facing a situation where work wasn't done, or we were faced with penalty fees regarding the construction management. This is the frustration we're facing, is that, obviously, like you say, problems have to pop up, and we have to address them. But there have been quite an extraordinary number of problems that are costing an extraordinary amount of money. And that points to a certain, uh, dilemma on our part, that we don't, the, the, there's a growing lack of trust in, in how we're being represented, and in the management team's methods by which they're handled.
I thank you for all the detail, Ed, to me, it just sounds like typical construction, capital construction work.
I mean, this, this, there's ebbs and flows to all that construction work.
Again, Mike, with due respect, I, I disagree with that. I understand, I've, I've been in this business.
I understand, I've been in this business of commercial public works, construction for 44 years, this typically could be the norm of unforeseen. That's not our issue. Our issue is not the money, our issue is the delay. This was brought to their attention in December and January of 2019, early 2020, we just got an answer, how are we going to move forward on August 1st? That's the frustration of the committee. It's not the frustration of the money, it's the delay, and if we didn't set that meeting up on July 16th, on May 16th, I don't think this committee, or the superintendent, would have been aware that they were having issues getting some guidance from Ulster County Board of Health. That's what our management team, they're our eyes and ears, they should be the ones that are moving that along, and if there is a stumbling block, they bring it to the superintendent's attention, or the committee's attention, and we try to expedite, which we did. We went to our county legislature, we went to the Department of Health, we went to the county executive. That's the frustration, it has nothing to do with money, and it has nothing to do with the process of construction work. I know that process. It's the frustration, and we pay X amount of dollars for that service of our oversight, our eyes and ears. If Anna representing the committee, and the rest of the board is Anna's committees, we're normal white people, don't know the ins and outs of the business, and we're going to assume that our management team and our design team is the ones that are going to guide us through the process. That's the frustration, the delay, has nothing to do with the money.
The frustration is well documented, sir. But what I'm hearing is, for both the abatement and the well vault, we don't have the solution yet. That's what I'm hearing.
We have the solution for the abatement, it was on our virtual meeting on July 7th, the date of our reorg meeting, I think it was the early part of that meeting.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, it was a June 26th meeting, because we had it done by June 29th. We gave the okay to move that forward at that point in time. That was money brought to our attention two weeks prior. And the committee reviewed that, and were at awe that it wasn't picked up earlier than at that point in time, wasn't brought to our attention at that time. That's the frustration. We are under budget, there are contingencies, the contingency monies will pick up the additional costs, that's not the committee's concern. The committee's concern is how our management team and our design team have moved the project along. The media center roof should have been done next week, but material isn't ordered until June 5th. From a contract or award date, the board awarded on January 15th.
We also, with the COVID crisis, school got closed, we picked up an extra two months in the construction schedule, where we had people, we could have people on site. They weren't planning on being here at that time. I was a gift, actually, to have that time to start on a lot of this work during what would have been the school year, when we wouldn't have started. So, and we weren't able to take advantage of that. That's the most, that's part of the most disconcerting part of that. It's lost opportunity, and also at one point in time, being led to think that, especially with the abatement issue, that we were going to come in well under our number. Can't say that enough. And now we're here, possibly still be under, but we had an opportunity for money to do other things with. And now that opportunity is going to be taken away from us.
At this point, what options do we have with the management team? Are there any options for the management team at this point, given the body of work that we can't create this way? Because there are almost enough projects, so what options do we have at this point?
Yeah, I guess just to further that question, I understand both sides completely, and not necessarily the projects, different projects that I ask for personal projects, we all know how they go, there are frustrations, and I think it's just figuring out, how do we move forward, right? And I think there's obviously time and there's money that are an argument here, right, are the two main aspects. And I may say it's not money, but it is money, we've been coming for change orders, we paid extra to get it done earlier, so it is both. How do we move forward? We, you know, we know we need to keep up on them. Obviously, I commend you and applaud the Support Services Committee for doing that, because I think without your support, we wouldn't be where we are today. I think the other thing, you know, like I said, just to clarify the real question, how do we move forward, right? We probably don't have any option for the management, for the architectures today, but is it something that we have to learn from and move forward, and when we go out there for the next project, we need to consider? Or is there anything that can be done there?
Absolutely. We definitely moved forward. I mean, you, I believe, I think you're the one that made mention at that meeting, that you wanted to make sure they were starting on June 29th, which they didn't. But we allowed it to go, because there was some survey work that had to be done before they, if they could come in, and they came in there instead of that Monday afternoon. That was fine, but we moved them into that direction. But again, just like you said at that meeting, we were put into the 11th hour, and the warning was, if you don't approve it, it delays the project. So what does that tell us? We're going to be the scapegoat if something gets delayed, so we had to approve it at that point in time. I think the committee at that point in time thought it was quite steep, as a number, but that's what we were given.
My input, certainly I share the frustration. So when we were told about the well, and that there still really wasn't any movement on it, it took, you know, a few weeks ago, it was just a few phone calls from myself and Mr. Miller, to get contact with, you know, Department of Health. Then, you know, we were told again, when we met last week, I think it was on Tuesday or Wednesday, you know, we set up a meeting with the county legislative, you know, the legislators, on Friday. In two days, we got all the people we needed here. So that is very frustrating, that we have to step in and kind of save the day. But we did, and the important thing is that it got done. Certainly, Mr. Brown, you have much more experience on the day-to-day workings of construction projects, but as you have too, I've seen in my 32 years, many construction projects, and it's not an excuse, they never end on time. I've rarely had a construction project finish on time, they're always going a couple months to do punch list items, things like that. And I also, you know, I remember as a high school principal, walking the halls one week before school, and there's, there were literally wires hanging all over the place. And in one week, miraculously, it was ready. So, you know, these companies also know how to play the game, and they know that they got to pick up the pace once August comes. I think the Support Service, this is the finest Support Services Committee I've ever seen and worked with, because of the knowledge that the committee has, and even though you have, at any school district, you have a construction manager, you have a design team, you still need to be on top of them, because if you're not, they're going to, because these companies spread themselves so thin, and I'm not making excuses for them, but these are big companies that have, we're not their only client, and, you know, sometimes they grease the squeaky wheel, so we got to be squeaky. So we've done a great job, and I am confident that a bulk of the thing, the project, will be done for school.
Tom, thank you again, though, for making that meeting of last week happen, and facilitating that, because if that didn't happen, we'd still be here without a lot of the answers we were talking about, Mike, for thanks again.
And if we, you know, if we anticipate that the front of the building's not going to be ready for September, let's just communicate that, press release or whatever, and let people know that that's not going to be ready for September. We'll see how it shapes up over the next couple of weeks, but let's just keep people informed.
Mr. Miller, do you have an update that you might be able to share with us?
Only if Mr. Delcicora said that it will be done. That's why there's, actually, there's a big difference between the abatement and the well issues. The abatement was a whole lot of oversight problem, and the well was a bit of a design building based on a copperwood original design, and the lack of aggressiveness to get it straightened out, and in all reality, based on what I knew and what we do, we put it on the table for them to put it together, ask them what the health department would accept, and I think that has led to some of the being, now, how can we move forward at this point in time, as it's been still going through the process that they've been having. But Delcicora has said that the front of the building will be done for, and all.
Thank you. And will the area around the well vault, the vault, be underground, or will it be graded and leveled at the same time?
Okay. Any other questions in regard to the project?
Thank you.
Anything for the good welfare of the issue? I just want to personally thank our superintendent, assistant superintendent, Director of Facilities for putting together, I know all those other individuals are in our critical consideration, some high school staff that put the graduation together. I was able to sit in on one of the sessions, and like everybody said, it ran smooth, I think everybody was happy with the way the process went, and to give the opportunity of oversight, to see the drone, the education, and the checks, and I think everybody was pleased with that. So again, congratulations, and thank you to our team that we put together, that organized and got the job done, as usual.
Thank you.
Officially, I just want to thank the assistant superintendents, superintendent, and everybody, we know that there's a lot others who helped put together the presentation and plan for really moving forward, and it takes obviously a tremendous amount of time and thought, and I think, you know, we are going to stick together through this, and it's just a matter of figuring out how to navigate it, but I think just the preparation for tonight, and having thought about all the questions that we asked, and just, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Okay, we'll open the meeting up to public comment, and again, as usual, please state your name, and we're going to utilize the microphone that's set up right here in this aisle. The meeting is now open to public comment.
Good evening, my name is Josh Potatum, I teach English here at Highland High School, and I'm here to just speak briefly on the racial equity plan that Mr. Bon Jovi mentioned. I've been meeting with a group of educators informally from all three buildings in our district over the past couple of months, like-minded educators who really want to know what we can do to move the needle on this work. As you said, Mr. Bon Jovi, this is not fast work, but it is urgent work, and we all feel the sense of urgency and the need to move forward on it. What we're asking is for a roll. We're asking to work with you guys, and to give us an opportunity to take some aspect of this work and to run with it, and whether that ends up being us as the district representatives on the ad hoc committee that Mr. Barone mentioned at the last meeting, or whether that ends up us being one of the other teams, as you mentioned in your statement, Mr. Bon Jovi, I want to let the board know, and I want to let the parents that are here tonight, and the former students, and our current students know, that we're here for this work, and that you have a group of dedicated educators who are ready to take part, to work with the Board of Education, to work with our administration, to work with our students and our community members, to make sure that this work moves forward. And with all the stress of the reopening plan and planning for COVID, we understand that there's a lot on your shoulders right now. Give us a roll, allow us to take a little bit off of your shoulders, and allow us to run with some of that work, because it does need to happen, you know, once the hashtags stop trending on social media, the work will still need to be done, and this is the time to do it. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Kate Fennell, and I'm from the class of 2021. Today, I've been reading a statement from Stephanie Dolan, who has done a lot of work at Highland since 2001. Thank you for allowing us to be here from what we have. I cannot be there in person and talk about my subjects or needs or anything. I feel the students in Southland are from having a level of understanding and acceptance in ours, to include any diversity, which is by my ambition, listed in the support of the racial collective agreement, and 11 recommendations we have received. I report this year closely, and I know that some people are chomping on my bus. During the last year, students were adding to my mind every year. It was not the student translation, the language of the newly added students was very offensive. The previous driver had originally tried to control it, but gave up, and the students that received that information, the edgery was new from our new research. The students were given several rider controls by both the other driver and myself, nothing changed. It is not my intention to know any of my fellow drivers or any transportation staff under the bus. I just wanted to point out that we should have restated set policies such for a vote in those such situations. I know that many of my students are uncomfortable and it was a distraction since you are driving. As a committee, as a committee commander, he can't support areas like you, and I report to other committees for our issue, and for your not being attention, and so to know. Dolan, sorry.
At last meeting, Highland students and alumnus organized Against Racism presented 11 recommendations to the Board of Education following our sharing of student experiences. I understand it can be difficult to grasp and reckon with the reality of what was shared. Students being made to feel unsafe to the omnipresent Confederate flags that haunt the school's halls. Teachers not only sharing racially charged and inaccurate information while instructing, but also profiling and stereotyping students proudly and publicly. Middle schoolers sharing that they have been tormented by racial slurs that no seventh grader should ever have to understand. Yet these kids do understand, they understand that they're not being advocated for. They understand that these words and actions are not just mean, they are not just bullying, they are harmful, they are intentional, and they are institutional. They understand that. If a seventh grader can understand that, you all can do the same. Your young students have no choice but to grasp the reality of Highland because of the discrimination they face, the narratives they are fed, the lack of representation they're reminded of daily, and the curriculum they are taught, which neglects to teach them why their lives matter. As a district and a town, the time has come to grasp this reality. It is clear we need an urgent and immediate response. As Erin Quinn said last week in Hudson Valley, "Enough is enough." You have heard our grievances, you are on notice, it is time to act. I understand and respect the decision to bring in an external group to consult on these matters, when it comes to leadership development, anti-racist trainings, initiating community conversations and focus groups when it comes to school climate, and reviewing K-12 curriculum. It's a great first step, thank you for that. It's important to get pointed in professional guidance for trying to undo hundreds of years of miseducation, racist practices, and perpetuated harm. Again, thank you for this. Again, thank you for this first step. However, you need no consultant to show this ever-expanding diverse community that its needs are important and worth your attention and funds. You need no consultant to create an ad hoc committee and invite new diverse perspectives into these vital conversations. I'm happy to hear that steps are being taken to initiate this. There's no reason for delay. This ad hoc committee should be solidified by the start of the school year. You need no consultant to know you have utterly failed when it comes to diversifying your hires and having a staff that reflects the makeup of your student body. Your eyes are the consultant for that. Mr. Barone, last meeting, you referenced your nephews of color. How do you think they would feel being young and black in America? Going through their school, seeing no teacher who looked like them? No one who could share their experiences? No one to teach them the lessons they yearn for about their history as lovers, as artists, as scholars, as leaders? Do you think the monotonous lineup of white teachers inspires them to be their best and most beautiful selves? It is your job as administrators and as board members to find teachers who fit the needs of not only the district, but the times. It's also your job to make Highland a place and an environment in which diverse instructors feel welcome to teach. It is not the job of the community to find those people for you. If it were, we would hope to be paid for doing someone else's job. You need no consultant to issue a public statement and stance on racial equity. A commitment to improvement is why you hire a consultant to aid in achieving those goals. The commitment itself does not require a consultant. So make a statement beyond this board. It's a cop-out to just get a consultant without making a commitment to change. I would hope you need no consultant to tell you that racial slurs are unacceptable, both on and off school grounds. Every day you go without adopting an explicit policy on racial slurs in teacher reporting is another day you're validating that behavior and letting down your students. The school has the power to disturb the normalization of racially charged language and behaviors. It is you all who can decide to set the precedent. You heard what Kayla just said, your staff is calling on help, how do they do this? It is you who can decide if you want to be, if you want your school to be one that encourages or discourages hate. Do you need a consultant to tell you what the right choice there is? You need no consultant to thumb through the hundreds of pages of fact-based research which has proven that Highland dress code is unacceptable. For it criminalizes people with penises and sexualizes people with vaginas, specifically those of color. It leaves room for two men to abuse their power and being racist, sexist, homophobic, transphobic, fatphobic. I could go on. Further, the dress code is supposed to make the school environment more conducive to learning. For the dress code to police boobs, criminalize hats and disallow sagging pants, a specifically racist policy might I add? But not to discourage students from displaying the Confederate flag across their chest is an injustice. It's not only an injustice, but it is indicative of who you care to be affected by the rules. Students of color are to be policed by your dress code, that is clear. Moreover, your dress code reads, quote, "Any dress or appearance which advocates discrimination or degrades others based on race, color, creed, weight, religion, religious practice, ethnic group, national origin, gender, sexual orientation or disability is not allowed." Yet, you allow students to proudly display the Confederate flag, a symbol which has been deemed a common white supremacist symbol by the Anti-Defamation League. Do you think it is conducive to learning for students of color to be surrounded by hate symbols in their classes? The Tinker Standard says, "Students have First Amendment and free speech rights as long as they do not disrupt learning or create issues with other statements and students." I can of course direct you to all of the case law, of which there are over a dozen cases throughout the United States which set a precedent for the Tinker Standard. Do you think a racially inflammatory symbol might disrupt learning or create issues between students? I know it does, because I've been there, in those classrooms, feeling the discomfort, the disease. And I'm white. For black people, that flag says you're not welcome. It means lynching. It means you do not have rights. It means, I think you should still be a slave. Are you okay with that? It absolutely harms the learning environment and it needs to go now, tomorrow. No consultant needed. I'm happy to hear that you have the intention to sign up for this marathon with us and in taking steps to address racial equity, that's important. Those steps mean nothing without follow-through. And they mean nothing unless they're only followed up with the question, what's next? What else should we be doing? Thank you for the heavy emotional work I'm sure you all have been doing when considering how to navigate these issues and in coming up with a plan on how to open our school safely. As was stated, I'm sure that work will never be over. And your continued growth and engagement is essential to this community. But it can't start with a consultant, it needs to start now, because we're counting on you and we're looking to you for guidance. Thank you.
Hello, Dean Murray. Truthfully, today I wasn't planning on speaking. I was actually hoping, I went last meeting, hopeful that the board was going to start making immediate action. However, I felt, as Celia just mentioned, we have a lot of goals and plans and intentions of doing things. However, we listed eleven key points. I understand creating an ad hoc committee will take time, by new parents, by new community members. But there were points within our suggestions and our recommendations that could be done last year that could have been done four weeks ago, the day after the board of education meeting. For instance, we updated the calendar. I hope the updated calendar has and reads Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Commons Day. I would like to hope. Discussing and we're getting, and we're getting rid of AP European History and changing that to AP World History. Those are changes that I wished I was going to be hearing from today's meeting. We spoke a lot about today frustrations with delays with our capital project. Well, it's been four weeks, hold on, since our last board of education meeting in which we presented eleven points. Well, I'm frustrated too. I'm over these delays. And, you know, we might not have money or, you know, money related to it, but it has people's lives at stake. You have students coming into our school district not feeling safe, not feeling supported. That's unacceptable. So if we're going to be upset about delays, be upset about this delay too. Where is the action? These, and this is all, if you really want to think about it, I mean, I, I understand the, the stress. And I listened to today's meeting and I was in truly, not, I was able to really think about how I would be doing if I was still a school coming into Highland and having inter-COVID twenty-nine, twenty-twenty era. But that doesn't mean that we prioritize that and forget about our black students, because we've done that for too long. This is all connected in reality as well, intersectionality, something that we've spoken about in last meeting as well. Black people in America, as a statistic show, are much more likely, have been testing positive, positive for COVID-nineteen. Higher percentages than white people. So there is an intersectionality. Think about our black students there. Think about how our black students continually are not being supported. And at least in reality, all has a connection, that we need to prioritize both at the same time. Still, we have not seen any, at least to my knowledge, reaching out to our black and students of color for mental health services during these really difficult times. We continue to see no real progress. It's just, it's truly upsetting, because as I mentioned, I, I thought, I left last week's meeting, last month's meeting thinking, okay, they've got it, they've listened, they've heard those testimonies where kids were talking about being called the N-word and being teachers using racial slurs in classrooms, antisemitism, we have homophobia, we have students that have people-colored shoes that are being told to change their shoes. This is unacceptable. So I guess my point here is I really hope that this starts tomorrow. That the review of the code of conduct starts tomorrow, that we ensure that the calendar's updated, that curriculum, and that we use the teachers, as Mr. Tatum just spoke, that we really get to, get to speak with them and use their knowledge and their willingness to fight and work on this. Because we cannot keep pushing this off, pushing this off, pushing it off, we need to prioritize. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we'll, uh, close public comment at this time. Either motion from the board will go into executive session. Motion made by Mike, by Heather, all in favor. Pushing Carrie. Thank you everyone for coming out this evening.
First, first, I thought, uh, I want to, Celia, and Celia, I want to let you know that I have sent your testimony.